Call to order, the planning commission meeting for Thursday, December 16th, 2021. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, please call and roll.
Yeah. Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Smolke.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is adopted. Next, we have the approval of our minutes from our November 18th meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolke.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the November 18th meeting.
Second. Motion by Smolke, second by Heikala. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the minutes are approved. First order of business is planning case 21 dash 5-0, preliminary plat at 8840 and 8850 Evergreen Boulevard, SFC Coon Rapids. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair Schwartz, excuse me. Commissioners, this is a preliminary plat, to plat 22.9 acres into two lots. The property is located right here off of Evergreen and 90th. You might know it as the old Honeywell site. And what they're doing is they've got this undeveloped piece over here in the southwest corner that they would like to plat off as a developable lot. So this is the preliminary plat. This is that wooded area. This lot is about 3.25 acres, and the remaining parcel, Lot 1, is a little over 19 acres, 19.6 acres. So it's just a two-lot split. What they did do, and we asked them to do this, our staff did, because if you look at the lot, it's wooded, there's some topography changes there, and there's a wetland. It kind of corresponds with this wooded area here. And staff wanted to make sure that you could actually put something on here and make it work, so they did. This isn't by any means tying them to this type of plan. What the intent was, was to just show how this site might be developed and work around the existing wetland there. When they do come in for, should the plat get approved, when they do come in for development of this parcel, one of the items we'll be looking at is any sort of wetland mitigation that might be required. But this is just a concept plan to show that the site is really a buildable lot. With that, staff is recommending, excuse me, that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the condition that all engineering comments be addressed. Answer any questions?
Mr. Harlecker, if and when they develop it, would they be sharing the parking lot with the existing building?
Chair Schwartz, yeah, to some extent there will be. So there'll be a shared access and parking agreement that'll have to be in place as part of that site plan approval.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, with respect to the impervious surface, that leaves Lot 1 with almost zero green space, does it still meet the requirements if they carve this piece of land off?
The lot coverage requirement, it's really based on the building size. And there is open, you know, they've got spaces, it's hard to see here, but up in here and along the perimeter, so they should be able to meet the requirement. And again, with Lot 2, that'll be something that we'll look at, that staff will look at when they do site plan approval for Lot 2.
So will Lot 2 still be part of the drainage plan for Lot 1 then?
At this point, that would be an engineering question that'll be addressed when they do site plan review. At this point, I'm not aware how the stormwater management is handled. It's not handled on-site. It goes to an off-site system.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, I'm looking at the schematic for Lot 1, the big one, and our packet, the background, I think has them reversed. It talks about Lot 1 being the 3.2 acres, and kind of consistent with that, Lot 2 is 19.6, so I think it's just our packet is wrong. We'll go by the schematic, right? Lot 1 is the...
Yeah, Lot 1 is the 19-acre lot, and Lot 2 is the 6, is the 3.25.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Mr. Harlecker, the Lot 2, well, it's actually just the plat, but is there any consideration on the south side that the private drive is still going to be accessible?
Well, the private drive, it's right through here, so it's not really on this site. It's not part of the site.
Okay, it isn't. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harlecker, one other thing, is that building on Lot 1 occupied now?
Part of it is. I don't know if it's fully occupied. I think there's a couple tenants in, there is a call center in there, and I don't know if their only tenant in that space, Mr. Fidelius, do you know?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and my commission members, so Alina does have a call center which occupies a fairly large portion of the building. I don't know if Honeywell still occupies the balance of the space, but Alina takes up a pretty good share of it.
And any other questions? All right. This time I will reopen, reconvene public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this case, planning case 21 dash 5-0, the preliminary plat at 8840 and 8850 Evergreen Boulevard? Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
In planning case 21 dash 5-0, I move that the commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following condition, that all engineering comments be addressed.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and a decision by the city council at the January 18th, 2022 meeting. All right, our next case, planning case 21 dash 38 and 39, a site plan and conditional use permit at 3525, 3531 Coon Rapids Boulevard, and 34XX on 115th Lane, U-Haul Company of Northern Minnesota. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, this request has been postponed to the January meeting. The applicant is working on revising the building elevations and site plan to meet the comments that he heard at the last meeting.
All right. At this time, I will reopen the public hearing on this case, planning case 21 dash 38 and 39. Anyone present wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none here this evening, we will continue this public hearing one more month to the January 20th meeting. Commission, we need a motion.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I'll make the motion. In planning case 21 dash 38 and 39, the commission proposed action on this item, postpone this action on this item to the January 20th meeting.
Second. Motion by Knoblock, second by Heikala.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, that's continued to the next one. Our next case, planning case 21 dash 49, site plan for a 10,600-square-foot retail building at 10520 Hanson Boulevard, DGOG Coon Rapids. Mr. Harlecker.
This is the, excuse me, Mercy Hospital is looking to expand...
No.
Pardon?
This is number three.
Number three you're on. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is similar to the U-Haul request. Again, they're postponed until the January meeting to address and make further revisions to their site plan and building elevations. So they'll be back before the commission on the January 20th meeting.
All right, thank you. And in this case, I will reconvene the public hearing. Anyone present wish to speak on this case, planning case 21 dash 49, the site plan? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will continue this public hearing to the January 20th meeting. And commission.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Smolke.
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing to the January 20th meeting and postpone action on this item to the January 20th meeting in planning case 21 dash 49.
Second. Motion by Smolke, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that case is continued to the January meeting. Our next case is planning case 21 dash 55, a site plan for Mercy Hospital Ambulance Bay Edition at 4050 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Wald Architects and Engineers. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, this is a request for site plan approval to expand the ambulance bay and a portion of the emergency department. The area that they're looking at here is just east of Dakota Street, and the existing ambulance bay is right here. Shows up better on the air photo here. One of the things they're looking at doing as part of this expansion is this driveway here on the north end will get shifted further to the north, and this driveway here on the south end will be shifted slightly to the south to accommodate the enlarged ambulance bay. What they're doing is expanding this to accommodate up to six ambulances. It's a 7,200-square-foot addition. Right now, they can hold about two ambulances in there. With the expansion, they'll be able to accommodate up to six. The ambulance bay is about 3,900 square feet, and the ED expansion here is about 2,200 square feet. This is Dakota Street at the top, the main street, off-screen to the right. This dashed area here is a future expansion of the emergency department. It's not part of the site plan review. It'll be subject if they do come into its own separate site plan review. They just wanted to show it here as some additional information and a possible future The way that the site will focus, similar to what it does now, is the ambulances will come in off of Drake Street, enter from the north, and then they'll exit from the south. This driveway here, that exit out onto Dakota Street, is currently in about this location here, so they're shifting it further to the north to accommodate the addition to the emergency bay. The proposed addition won't impact any parking or access into and out of the site. The engineering department did look at the proposed location of the driveway here and its possible impact on the turn lane, and they were satisfied that it wouldn't impact the functionality of that right turn lane. This is the grading plan that was proposed. You can see it's a fairly steep slope going down to Dakota Street, and because of that, you'll see on the landscape plan, there really isn't an opportunity for landscaping further down the slope. What they did do is planting up closer to the trees with some ornamental trees, some larger bushes, some dogwoods, and perennials underneath the ornamental trees. The rest of the site will be sodded, and irrigation is required for any areas that have sodder landscaping. So the exterior elevations, the north side with the entrance, and then the south side where they leave, the elevations will match the existing design and material of the existing hospital with a brick and precast up above. This is on the elevation facing Dakota Street with the windows up here, and again, the bricks and the elevation with the different materials to give it some interest. And again, this whole facade here will be softened with the proposed landscaping, the dogwood shrubs and the ornamental trees. This is what it's supposed to look like with the perspective, looking at it from the northwest, near the intersection of Dakota and Main Street, with the north elevation here, and then the west elevation along Dakota Street. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed site plan. Because this is in the port, it will go to the city council for their consideration and final approval, so the commission is making a recommendation this evening. The recommended conditions include all engineering comments be addressed, sustainability comments are addressed, and a site security agreement be entered into with the city. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, looking at the engineering comments and the landscaping comments, engineering is recommending that the landscaping be removed from that space due to the stormwater placement. Is that, has staff harmonized on which way we want that to go as far as either moving the landscaping or just allowing the landscaping to be bypassed due to the nature of what we're doing?
Yeah, given the type of landscaping, there is an opportunity to shift it away a little bit from the building because that pipe runs right along the edge of the building. And that way, they could still do the landscaping. And it's, the type of landscaping materials are proposed, they're not the big trees would be really affected by the slope. They're smaller and more adaptable to the topography along there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolke.
Mr. Harlecker, does the relocation of the drive-in interfere at all now with the location of the, isn't there a helicopter pad? Is it down the road further?
The helicopter pad has been moved up to the roof.
Oh, they moved it, okay, got it. I thought I saw in one of the renderings where it was still there.
The air photo, the air photo was still there.
Perfect, got it. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 21 dash 55, the site plan for Mercy Hospital Ambulance Bay Edition at 4050 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Anyone present wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone present wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Is the applicant here today?
Right there.
I just have a simple question about the stormwater line running over where the proposed expansion is going to be. I guess I'm just wondering if that's the appropriate placement, if you're going to build a building right over that in the future, or if you've considered that one and done instead of potentially having to redo your stormwater plan.
And please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name, my name is Bob Hill. I'm an employee of Alina Health. I'm a project manager for them, and also the owner's representative for the project. So what are the reasons that we chose to place the driveway where it is, is we're trying to create a new approach at the same time, along with this ambulance garage project, to our main entrance, our emergency entrance, and the parking garage. I don't know if you had a chance to go into the emergency area or the main entrance of the hospital right now, but it's a little confusing and a little tight for people to navigate and make their way into the parking garage. So by locating the driveway in that area, it gives people a much better look at the entire picture of where they're going, and there are three options, which are emergency, main entrance, and parking garage. Whereas where the drive aisle was at one time, it was a little more difficult to navigate that and figure out how to get into the parking garage, especially if you weren't looking at it as you were coming down Dakota Street.
Let me restate my question. The proposed stormwater that's running along and perpendicular to the drive aisle there, it runs right under where your proposed expansion is going to be?
Yes.
The future expansion, it's not currently contemplated. I'm just wondering if you've considered that, or if you're going to move it again, or since we're looking at it here and it is new to the plan currently?
If we did the proposed expansion, we would probably relocate that.
Okay.
Andrew, is that correct?
Yes, just to...
Come to the microphone, please, and give your name for the record.
As we were, as we were developing this plan, because of the grades of getting the drives down to the street level, that drive needed to be pushed out, and that is where we came up with that additional space, just as a result of that, for that future expansion. The idea, and I know we talked, I talked a little bit to Scott about this, with that coming about as part of this process and discovering we had that additional potential space, it would be a separate planning commission approval, we understand that, but at some point, we're figuring out funding for both right now, that that would be ideally going at the same time. So we'd come back, get approval for that, and when it all comes together and construction starts, they'd both go at the same time. So at that point, the plans will be further developed, and we can see better where we need to put that stormwater.
Perfect. Thank you.
And could you please give your name for the record, please?
Sorry, Andrew Jordan, with Wald Architects and Engineers.
Thank you. Commissioner Casey.
So I kind of inferred from our packet that you might come back in the spring for that ER/ED expansion, site plan?
At this time, what we're doing is we're putting together an estimate for that expansion, and if we feel that it gets some traction in our senior leadership, then what we would do is combine that with this project.
Okay. So that's how you talk about doing them, construction at the same time?
Yes, yes. When we originally started looking at this, and we put the site plan together and we submitted back in November, we hadn't really, at that time, identified the opportunity for a ED, significant ED expansion.
Yeah.
And this gives us a great opportunity to make that expansion, which would take care of a significant challenge we have at Mercy right now in our ED department. Right now, our ED department volumes are running extremely high. If you have to go to the ED, try not to go between noon and 2:00 AM. Because you're going to wait a long time. If we can get this expansion approved, it should cut that wait dime down significantly, and that's our, that's our true hope here, is that we'll be coming back to you once we get the nod from senior leadership at Alina that we should move forward with this project. If we don't get approval for that expansion, we'll still come back and complete the ambulance garage applications.
Do you anticipate any additional signage to alleviate the confusion on the driveway coming in?
Absolutely. Yep, we will be doing significant changes to the signage in order to help guide people coming in today. It's mainly the parking garage where we have the challenge.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? All right, thank you. And commission, your thoughts, considerations, motions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
I think of Mercy as being kind of a jewel in Coon Rapids. Happy to see that they're expanding and looking ahead, looking to the future, and, you know, beyond what they're proposing right now, even beyond that, so I think it's a good, good plan.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I would agree. I think they are a major employer for a city and kind of a jewel, if you will, that it's nice that they're seeing an expansion in their future.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
Commissioner Smolke.
In planning case 21 dash 55, I recommend, that the commission recommend approval of the proposal site plan to expand the ambulance bays with the following conditions, there are three of them. All engineering comments are addressed, sustainability comments are addressed, and a site security agreement be entered into with the city.
Second. I'll second that. Motion by Smolke, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, this is a recommendation by the planning commission and a decision by the city council at their January 18th, 2022 meeting. Good luck. Our final case this evening, planning case 21-54, the site plan building expansion at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, property is outlined here with the black, this is the existing facility here. What's being proposed, this is Evergreen and 90th with Springbrook Drive on the up backside here. They're proposing an addition to this side of the building and then across the front. This is the, the site plan, the existing building here, and as you can see, the addition, which is about 34,500 square feet, is wrapped around essentially the east, excuse me, the west and what I would call north sides of the building, right here. Existing building is a little over 52,000 square feet, and the total between the existing and the addition is almost 87,000 square feet. There's an existing driveway here to service this area here. As part of this expansion, there's a parking lot and stormwater basin proposed on the adjacent vacant parcel, which is right here. The lots have been combined into one lot with the stormwater basin here and parking on this lot, and then the expansion kind of filling in this space here. The, here's another version of the site plan, kind of showing better the footprint of the building with office and common area in this area here, with additional research space over here, and then over in this corner here. And it shows up in the building elevations, you'll see there's banks of windows along this portion of the wall, and then again along this area here of the, this wall here. The areas that are part of the, the research expansion, they don't have any windows on it. There's a proposed driveway coming in off of Evergreen, and another one off of Springbrook with the stormwater basin down here in the corner. They're proposing 75 new parking stalls with 24-foot wide driveways, so they beat the parking requirement. There's a loading area here and dumpster enclosure kind of tucked in this area here. This is the grading plan, it was split up into two sections, that's the reason for the gap here, but you can see stormwater basin here, and then the parking, and then there's another smaller stormwater basin at this end of the building with some grading associated with that. This is the landscape plan, the landscape plan complies with the landscape requirements with the street trees and hedge along Evergreen and 90th, trees planted around stormwater basin and landscaped islands, and then they've got trees along this property line here. They've got some additional evergreens over this way and some building landscaping here. They do have, it doesn't show up well on here, but foundation plantings along the edge of the building, and this area here is kind of a, an open common area, so they've got landscaping around that also, and it's continued around this edge of the building here. So it does meet the landscaping requirements. Building elevations, it's a mix of split-faced blocks, an architectural rolled metal siding, and then the, the glazing, the glass windows, and the percentages are included here, and it does meet the material requirements of the industrial district with the mix of, mix of materials. The dark areas here are where the windows are, so you can see this is the common area and office space, and it wraps around the corner of the building to this area here. And this area right in here, and right here correspond with the expanded research space on the interior. Here's what the building will look like, artist's rendering from the northwest, with the main entrance here, and then the, the office and open, or common areas along here. Another secondary entrance here with the common space outside there, seating area, then the building extends down along to the end, at the south end here. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the proposed site plan with the conditions that all engineering comments be addressed, site security agreement be entered into with the city, sustainability comments be addressed, and a crosswalk be installed across the Evergreen driveway, because there is a sidewalk along Evergreen, there's not one along 90th, and none is shown on the master sidewalk and trails plan. With that, I'll answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. One quick question, you said 75 new parking spaces, our packet says 79? And Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
On the north, northeast quadrant, what will happen to the existing 24 parking spaces by the old, by the, by the existing docks of the building?
Back here?
Yes.
What about them?
Well, on the plan, it says there's 24 existing parking spaces.
Okay.
Twenty-eight.
Are those being included in the parking space?
In the overall parking spaces for the site, yes, they are.
Okay, good.
Yep.
And, Mr. Commissioner Nablock, it's 20, listed as 28, not 24.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, do, do both those driveways exist, exist now, from 90th and from Evergreen?
No, they do not, there will be new, new ones constructed as part of this addition.
So where is the driveway now?
There's one over here at the far end, that's remaining.
Which far?
If you look on the air photo, there is one here that'll be eliminated, and then it'll be...
Two new ones.
I suppose replaced is a better way to phrase it. The new driveway will be in this location here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And the actual entrance to the building is located where?
It'll be at this area here. You see from the, the floor plan, this area here is kind of their, their office area, so this will be the main entrance coming in here, and then this area over here is employee common area. And then they've got an outdoor seating space here, on the elevations, you can see it's got kind of a trellis-like structure over the top of it.
Any other questions at this time? Petitioners like to make any kind of a presentation?
No.
No? All right. At this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 21-54, the site plan for building expansion at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak at public hearing? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. Question for the petitioners, has there any thought been given to a bicycle rack somewhere? That's always been our sticking point, a bicycle rack.
Good evening, my name is Doug Fiker with Framework Architects, here on behalf of the applicant. The answer to the question is yes, there will be bike racks. We omitted them from the site plan inadvertently, partially because they won't be purchased new. The owner functions in the building currently and does have bike racks, so we'll be reusing their current bike racks, so that is my mistake for not showing them on the site plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I may ask the applicant as well, could you just talk a little bit about your traffic plan while you're, because you're, you're building over half of your, your entrance as well as your existing, I'm assuming employee parking, because it's right by the door. So obviously you're going to have new parking, existing parking, and kind of what's your plan for moving that around? Can you keep all your employees on the site while you're building and transitioning and essentially wrapping your, your employee entrances?
Yes, we've acknowledged this is going to be a very complicated and challenging process to build. Our general contractor is working right now on creating kind of detailed phasing plans for how it's all going to come together, so I don't know if I can give you a detailed answer, but essentially the project will happen kind of in a series of small phases. Some of the initial things done, we'll be trying to get site clearing and some of the prep on the grading and things done as quickly as possible, so that when we do start the construction process and displace some of the existing parking, we'll hopefully have some of the new parking done to be able to accommodate that. In addition, a portion of the area shaded in blue right now will be, I should say, all of the areas in blue will be built probably in three or four separate chunks, which will allow us to keep the main entrance open. That part will actually be, where the existing main entrance is, that portion of the new construction will be the last to be built, so we can get the north, northwest side completed, get the new entrance functional, and then come back and build in that area that's covering up the old entrance. So it'll be difficult and challenging, but we're, we're working on how to get it done.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
Mike Conforti for American Preclinical Services. We also will be, we've actually entered a lease agreement with YMCA, which is next door for parking, so we will have additional parking through the YMCA, and we're going to be putting a sidewalk in front of the existing building in order for people to be able to use the sidewalk to get to the main, the main entrance during construction.
We appreciate you thinking about that ahead of time, thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner, any other questions for petitioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Harlecker or the applicant, how, how long do you anticipate this project from start to finish?
The overall completion is currently expected in the first quarter of 2023, so assuming we were able to start construction here in the next few months, a little over a year to complete the whole process.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Question for Mr. Harlecker, with respect to the trash and recycling, do we need to put in the standing comment about materials must match in that, given that it's, the materials are a little different than what we typically see? Do we, do we need to give any guidance around that?
I, I don't think so, it didn't, I didn't include it on here, but it does match, the, the enclosure does match the materials used in the building.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Luca Coney.
I did just catch a typo that's important for the record to reflect. Under site plan criteria, point one, a required finding is it be compatible with surrounding land uses. Somehow this snuck through saying, okay, the proposed site plan is not compatible with the adjacent industrial land uses. That should read, the proposed site plan is compatible with the adjacent industrial land uses. Must not have read that one out loud when I was...
Thank you. That's why we pay you the big bucks. And Commissioner, any other comments, questions? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I'll move approval in planning case 21-54, that we approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions, all engineering comments be addressed, a site security agreement be entered into with the city, all sustainability comments be addressed, a crosswalk be installed across from Evergreen Boulevard driveway.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Nablock, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion carries, this is a decision by the planning commission, and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. And moving on to other business, Mr. Harlecker, you have anything for us?
All the previously approved projects, a lot of them are still moving forward. Schneidermans and the old Sears space, it'll be going for the board of adjustment next month for signage along the highway on the back of the building. They want to put up a little sign that's larger than what's code allowed. And JCPenney's redevelopment is moving along, the car wash, Northdale and Hanson is, is moving along. We're working with the owner of the property at 3050 Coon Rapids Boulevard on getting tenants in his, in his spaces there. That's, that's really what's going on.
Hopefully we're getting a master parking plan to go along with the building?
Yes, we are close, closer.
Closer.
Yes.
And what, what do we have on the agenda for next month besides our two continued cases?
There is a, two home occupation permits and a zone change, or is it zone change for federal cartridge? Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's a zone change related to the overlay for the federal cartridge property. We did get that application in on Monday, so...
I have a question about these two cases that we have passed on a couple times now to get postponed. Are we going to see all new packet items and kind of things like that regarding, you know, the property at Hanson and Coon Rapids Boulevard, and then the U-Haul? Will we get all new kind of breakdowns?
Yes, you will.
Okay, I, I didn't want to...
They're submitting all redesigned civils as well as building elevations.
I didn't want to go back and dig out the old ones.
So you'll get all the, all the updated information.
All right, great, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
And then, Mr. Harlecker, will we see our kind of annual business packet as well in January as far as the, we do that year-end review and approval of all the items?
That, as well as doing the administrative stuff that needs to be done.
Mr. Chair, we can't let the evening go by without... Mr. Chair, we can't let the evening go by without acknowledging Mr. Harlecker. This is his last planning commission meeting, so...
We're not going to let him retire.
Well, I just want to acknowledge his service to the city. I was looking at his start date. So he started in May, May 8th of 2006, so that's 15 years, over 15 years ago. And by my rough math, it's at least 250 meetings, if you count planning commission, work session, city council, community meetings, maybe even more than that. I don't know if you've been keeping...
I didn't need to know that.
I don't know if you've been keeping track. But that's, that's obviously a lot, a lot of evenings away from family, and, and I think that's an important part to acknowledge that you have to have a supportive family that allows you to, to take the time that you need to obviously, to do the job. That includes serving the city and the planning commission. So I just want to thank Scott for his, his good work. We're certainly going to miss all of the knowledge and, and history that he has, but just want to wish him the best on, on his upcoming retirement.
Well, I want to thank you all, too. It's been a pleasure working with the board, different members over the years, and it's good to see. It's, it's, you guys work well together, and I appreciate it as a staff member, your input on projects. And when you do have questions, you get us to us ahead of time. And so, thank you.
Do we have any idea on a timetable for, not that he can be replaced, but a substitute?
Yes, yes. So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so we, we are working on a plan to, to refill Scott's position. In the interim, Matt Brown, who most of you know, who's our economic development coordinator, he is going to step in and basically handle the day-to-day planning activities. He, he will also prepare the staff report, and more than likely attend the next planning commission meeting, and probably those going on after that. We're talking about getting him more involved in, in planning-related activities. So we're still sorting out all of that. But my hope is, is that we can advertise the position. More than likely, it'll be first of the year. That will take a little bit of time, but I would anticipate, you know, sometime February timeframe, hopefully, we would have a replacement on board. But Matt Brown is very capable. He has a, a planning background. He works very well with Scott, very familiar with our process, so he'll certainly be, you know, well-qualified and well-suited to step in in the interim. And so I'm very, very happy and grateful that, that we have that in-house capability in the interim.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, have anything else for other business? Hearing none.
I would move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Casey, second by Heigl. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Leading to adjourn.